Hello, I will now call back to order the regular meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School Board of Education, meeting for July 10th, 2017. Member Roll call please.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Here.
Mr. Markison?
Here.
Mrs. Kryline?
Here.
Mr. Mormon?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Elliott?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. My President's report will be brief. I've read that summer is a time for breezy summer reading. I've been doing some breezy summer thinking. I read a few things this past week that hit me. Number one, the kindergarten class this fall will graduate high school in the year 2030. You still have to say "in the year" because it doesn't even sound real. It doesn't even sound like a year, 2030. What will those kids need to be college or career ready? Those who know me know I'm not a brainstorming kind of guy, but I think the folks that came before us spent more time than we do thinking about this kind of stuff. We should too. Number two, and I don't remember where I read this either. We learn the most from those who aren't a reflection of ourselves. We learn the most from those that aren't a reflection of ourselves. Just let that sink in. Number three, I saw Chief Justice John Roberts commencement address for his son's prep school. He wished his son and his classmates bad luck. He wanted them to experience bad luck so they learned the importance of chance. Not everything that happens to someone is their fault. And blame shouldn't be the default reply. So what does any of this mean? I don't know. It's summer, right? You're not supposed to make sense of anything. But I'm sure there are some kindergarten parents out there freaking out because five-year-old Jared can't do X yet. You remember that? Brittany, you'll be there soon. It'll be okay. And the same goes for the rising high school senior that's worried about getting into the right school. There's no such thing. Slow down and open up. Things will happen that not even a Lake Forest parent can control, and you will be okay. You'll meet people who disagree with you, someone that isn't a math whiz but can take an engine apart. We should seek people out that aren't just like us. Because you learn the most from those that aren't a reflection of you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Markison, and I will hand off to Dr. Holland to begin.
I think we're going to keep passing this around because everything I'm going to say will be in my presentation today.
Okay. Well, I have another cool part of the Superintendent's report, and I'd like to ask Mr. Puleo and whatever students you'd like to bring up to the podium to come on up so we can hear from you and tell you a couple of nice things. So I want to do a little bit of background first about Mr. Puleo. This started in 2012 or 13 when we did a mission vision exercise and
Oh wow, I remember that.
and Mr. Puleo facilitated one of the groups, one of the high school teacher groups, and was incredibly energized by that. I said, "Now, I used to work in private industry and I used to do this kind of work. And if something else comes up, just give me a call because I'd really like to do something cool." Remember that conversation, the Holland?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. I was trying to be a troublemaker and I, you know, I thought that's
Keep being a troublemaker. So, a short time later, a friend approached me and said, "Hey, we have this cool idea called the Innovation Incubator, and I think that you and Lake Forest might be really interested." And I said, "I know just the guy." And so we sent a team, and as I recall, you were the only teacher out of all the people that went. We were the only school that sent a teacher there and
Right.
made an impression.
Right.
And Mr. Puleo came back walking on air. He was so excited about this, and the rest, they say, is history. But this is a program that has been an incredible asset for our kids and for our community, and this is our opportunity to hear a little bit more about it and to thank you and each of your students. So I know you have a video presentation?
No, I don't.
I thought you did.
No, no.
No? Oh, I thought you did. All right.
I don't have one with me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank everyone, the support from the school board. What's so unique about this program, which I love, is the idea of bringing the community. It's truly what I think education should be. It's kind of the community and the teachers and the school and the administrators and everybody's involved. And, you know, we've had a chance, I've had a chance to work with, you know, parents, with community members, with administrators, and it's always, it's always, it really has changed my career. I mean, I come to work every day and it's a dream job for me. And I think what's the most exciting, I have, I like what you said today because I have twin juniors, they're going to be seniors this year, so they're insane about college. And I keep trying to tell them it doesn't matter who you are is what's more important. But I think what's really neat about this program is to watch what it does to the kids. I mean, to actually see students start, and I think some of these guys, I'll have them introduce themselves and they can say what, you know, your businesses are, but to watch them when they come in and to be in a position where instead of being in a classroom and being like a dictator or a traditional teacher, I'm more like a coach. And in many instances, I learn from them too, but to watch them grow is phenomenal. To see them go after things, to watch them, you know, go after challenges, and then to have people from the community come in and support us, the foundation, there's no way we could have done this without the foundation. And one of the things that I'm excited about is everywhere I go, because we were one of the first five schools in the United States to do this, I mean, our name everywhere we go, it's, you know, Lake Forest was doing this, and we receive calls all the time. I'm doing a summit next week with all the new schools that are coming on, and then I help train. And, you know, a lot of schools come to us now and ask us, "How do we do this? You know, how do we make this happen?" So in addition to that, it's been phenomenal for me because I'm getting connected to teachers from all over the United States, and then we share together. And I really think it's truly the type of program that is where education should be today. And it really does mirror what's happening at the university level. So I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity at the school to do something like this. Because I struggled for a long time. I've never enjoyed traditional type of learning. I really wanted to knock the walls down. And to have people from the school board, the administration, everyone support this has been phenomenal. And so I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity. But I think if each of the kids introduce themselves, they can tell you what, you know, they're working on. These are all kids that were funded for next year. They all received money, and I'll let them tell you how much they received. And they're going to be in the accelerator, which is the second-year program where they actually run a business. So, and again, you don't have, you know, it really makes a difference for most of the kids with, you know, going to college, they, you know, their experiences, what they write about. It really has landed some people in some really, really great schools. So, and your daughter was in it too, so you get, she was the first year, yeah?
Yeah.
Yep. And one of the things I really enjoy about it that I see, and they can attest to this, it's not so much the book learning, it's the things like learning how to evolve in a group. You know, learning, like what you were talking about, learning how to deal with conflict, learning how to, you know, work through those issues. It's phenomenal because that's where I really see the strength of the program. Because they walk in and they learn that they're in a group for a year, and we go through a process, you know, a group dynamic process. And it's, you know, they form, it's forming, storming, norming, performing, and they kind of learn those, that process. And that's where I think they get the biggest gift. So I'll have them talk a little bit, and then thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Hi, I'm Landon.
Hi, I'm Addison.
And we're the on-demand babysitting service, and we were funded 17-5, so we were really fortunate.
And so we created an on-demand babysitting app, so it's similar to Uber, and parents can go on and get a babysitter right when they need one. And all the babysitters are local CPR babysitter and first aid certified. And so you'll only be getting babysitters that live directly in your area. So if you go on the app in Lake Forest, you're only getting babysitters in Lake Forest. If you go on in Deerfield, you're only getting babysitters in Deerfield. You have the ability to rate and review the babysitters and have a two-way rating system. And so that's a little bit what we've been doing. And so right now, we're working on signing the contracts with investors, and then we'll be able to interview banks. And so that's what we're working on right now for the summer before we head back to school.
And then I just want to say one thing I love about this class is you just like don't, it's not like a science class where you just walk in, you're like, "Oh, I'm never going to use this again," you know? You're gonna, you know you're gonna apply it. And like, we want to major in business, so it's something that we can really take in and really understand the material to help us in the future.
And it's, and I like how we're really treated like adults in this class because we get to do our own thing, and he gives us like enough just to, so like, he gives us direction, but we also have a lot of things we have to do on our own and things we have to complete in our own time. So it's just nice to be treated like adults and not like children since we'll be going to college soon. So it's nice to be given that opportunity.
Hi, I'm Ava, and my group's company is Big Top. And what we're doing is we are partnering with Eye on 360, which is a charging smartphone case with an attachable 360 camera. And what we do as Big Top is we add utilities onto the charging smartphone case, such as our starting top, which is a speaker. And we received $3,500, and I'm just really excited to start this business. And now I also know that I want to major in business in college, and it's just a really cool experience.
I'm Taylor Conley.
I'm Kimmy Bloom, and we're Generation Integration. We got funded $4,000.
And we're creating a website that links high school students who are looking for service hours to senior living homes around the community who need more of a positive atmosphere and kids to come into their home. And right now, we're working on filing for nonprofit. We're in the midst of it because we're going to be a nonprofit group, and that's what we've been doing for the summer. Yeah.
So I have a question for all of you guys here. I don't know if somebody else has one. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Are you all juniors?
Yes.
Rising seeds.
Rising seeds. Okay, thank you.
So the program is for juniors, and one of the reasons is that then that way, they can go in their senior year if they get funded, and they can also, you know, continue running the business as seniors. So, and it's worked nice too. We have, last year, we had a group that two gals created a product called Safe and Sound. You may have heard of it. It's like a safety device for college students. So now what's happening is I have three or four students from the first year that those two girls are going off to college, and then they're going to have these three or four girls market their product. So those three or four will come into the second-year program too. So there's a lot of ways to work in the program, you know what I mean, in terms of how it functions. And then we're always evolving. Next year, we're going to have some changes, you know, with the way the kids are funded and, you know, so it's kind of an evolving program. And it's definitely been extremely rewarding for everybody. So, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, so there was a knowing nod from most of you when Mr. Puleo said something about group work and that being one of significant challenges. Could you guys talk about that a little bit? And if it's not group work that was the big challenge, what was it that you learned the most from?
I mean, obviously, you're working very closely with like a group of like four other people or three other people, so a lot of times you're like butt heads and you have to work around like personalities that you may not connect with. But I think what really helped is just being completely honest with each other and just, like, you just have to be totally honest with how like you're feeling or how, if someone says something to you, and just to get through that. But it's definitely, it'll definitely help for when like in the real world, when you have to, like, you're going to be faced with people and work with people you don't necessarily connect with.
I think one thing I want to bring up that was really interesting with their group, and we went through this, was that these guys went through, they were very successful working together, and they reached a point, I teach the kids that you go through a storming stage. There's always the excitement of being put together. And then the reality sinking, well, they went through a stage and there was a student in their group, he's not here tonight, there's five of them actually, so two of them came. But they reached a point where they're having difficulty with a group member, and it had reached a point where they were deciding that they might ask that group member not to move forward with them to pitch night, which is what they have to decide. And so they were going to approach this individual, and generally, I work with them when they're doing work like this. Well, needless to say, there was another member of their group who was kind of a quiet young man. He didn't, he wouldn't always say a lot, but he, you know, he was part of the group. He wrote me a letter, it was phenomenal. It's probably one of the best things in my teaching career I've seen. He wrote me a letter explaining to me how much he, this other group member, the value of the group member, and just that them going through, you know, the difficulties was part of what made them so wonderful in the group. So it was really neat because he wasn't used to also, he had written this to me, it was wonderful. I talked to his parents, they said, "Your son's incredible." So then I pulled the group together and I talked to them, and I said, "You, you know, you need to know what John," you know, I said to him, "John, go ahead and talk to the group." So I explained it to the group. And essentially, it was a really cool experience as a teacher because as a group, they then supported each other. Like, the student who wrote the letter, they actually, you know, said to him, "We respect your opinion, you need to speak up more because that's important for us as a group." And as a result, they were very mature about the way they handled it, and they all, you know, now the way they work is even greater. But to watch the kids do work like that is pretty cool. Because that's not a normal high school-level work that you would see, and them working through those issues and have someone speak up for someone else. So I think it altered the group, so they reached what we call the performing stage, you know what I mean, from norming to performing. So I think that's what was probably the hardest for you guys.
Can I just ask, are the, do the groups select each other or are they assigned?
No, they're, we base them off, like, we took this personality test, and then there were four different options that you could be. So then we matched up with all four different options. Yeah, so just getting thrown in with like four different people that you most likely aren't close with, at first, you feel a little bit awkward, like, giving your opinion, you know, making, like, not, like, being, you know, self-conscious about what you're saying, but as the year progresses and being closer with your members, you really like get comfortable with them, and then you realize the differences between like a right way of, you know, being honest and a wrong way, and you really learn those two, and it really helps us.
Can I ask another question? Sorry. So, I love this. And first of all, is this a curricular class? I should know this, but is, you meet during the day?
Yeah.
Every day? Okay.
Yeah, we have, yeah. And then what happens is some, we, the foundation works with us in a partnership, and we have what are called coaches and mentors. A coach is someone from the community that's an expert in an area that I might curriculately be covering, like, let's say, market sizing or marketing or finances. So an individual will come in and work with me and actually be more in a teacher capacity for a few days. And then every one of the groups has a mentor, which is a volunteer that meets with them at least once a week for the entire year. And that adult helps guide them and work with them. So it's kind of, you know, they have a lot of supports.
So, I mean, this is, this is the project-based learning that we all dream about, and I wondered if there were, there was discussion among faculty and other departments for ways of extending this kind of project-based learning to, say, science and social studies and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen, I don't know if you want to speak?
It's actually happening across the building, across content areas, and our new schedule has provided more of an opportunity for teachers to explore, especially with having an 80-minute class period. And so if you go by the Business Incubator, students are in there throughout the day, during study halls, before school, after school. A lot of teachers have been more interested and willing to engage students in a variety of different ways. And having ample time during the day to really engage students without the period ending has really allowed us to do more of that.
Yeah, I mean, that, for me, that, it's been incredible, having that new schedule, and they'll even tell you it's wonderful for project-based learning, it really works well, so.
I got to ask one question. So as the students who are thinking about selling things to other people, has it changed how you think about being a consumer yourself? Has it changed what you notice when you go to other people's websites, how you evaluate whether or not to spend your own money?
Yeah, it really has changed my outlook, like, just like looking at the websites, like, we just like base it off of other people. It really helps, like, looking at other people's websites. And, yeah, it's really given me a greater outlook on online.
I would think so. Yeah, that's cool.
Mr. Puleo, I just want to say thank you. It was a wonderful leap of faith that you took, and my daughter will still talk about, you know, she's in college now, she still talks about your class and what she learned. So thank you for taking the leap of faith, and thank you to the foundation for helping make it all possible. It's a really neat opportunity, and it's catching fire at our school.
And I appreciate that because, again, it really, to me, this was about the effort of a lot of people, not just me. It was the community, you know, the administration, the school board, it was everything that made this happen. It wasn't, you know, just me alone. So those supports were there. There were administrators that were willing to, you know, break down those walls, there was, you know, the foundation was willing to change the way they did things. And so it really took a lot of people, and I think as a community, we should all be proud because it's changed the way our kids learn. So it's awesome.
There's probably no program that we hear more about than Pitch Night and the Innovation Incubator, the mentors that work with our students, it's like the best part of their day or their week. And they come up to us and they tell us about this all the time. They always tell us, "The kids are the best ambassadors you guys have. You got to get these guys out in public more." And the public speaking is one of the things that always strikes everybody on Pitch Night is you guys are just remarkable in the public presentation. For that night is one of the largest events that high school holds, actually. It's an academic event. It's a really big deal. And so thanks to all of you for coming tonight. The foundation is going to be presenting later on. And Mr. Puleo, you said it very well, we couldn't be where we are right now had it not been for a very substantial leap of faith by the foundation because they had never done anything like that before. And a lot of hard work. I know Lauren Fagel was a big cheerleader.
Yeah, she was really, and well, you're, just the whole change in philosophy of, "Let's not worry about making mistakes." Let's not, you know, I think that I'm able to mirror to my students now that it's acceptable to go through a process, you know, to get somewhere, and I think that's been important. Lastly, I do want you guys to know some of the great things that come out. Like, we had a mentor this year who belongs to an incubator in Libertyville called Fresh Start, and he loved the program so much that he approached me and he said, you know, "We would love to start an internship program with the high school." So this summer, we have three students who are now working at Fresh Start, and, you know, we had them interview, and they're spending their summer doing that, and they're paying them a small amount of money to work with them too. And so far, the kids have been saying it's been incredible. So, again, that's the kind of stuff that you can't really, I guess, put a price tag on because it just happens, so.
So congratulations to each of you, and thank you very much for coming tonight. And you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you don't have to.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Was that it? Oh, you've got
Part two of the Superintendent's report.
Part two, okay.
Coming up here. Try pointing at the computer. Why don't you point at the laptop? Is this where I suggest having someone under the age of 18 that'll have it on like that? Well, we will do it a different day. What's that? Is it not turning on? Looks like it should be on. Which one did you hit? This one? I don't know. Maybe you've hit them both? I don't know. Oh, there it is. Okay. There you go. I got to get it to project on here. Yep.
It's on the computer. We want it on camera. Yeah, it's on. It's on. Then it won't switch over to camera.
Let down by the technology gods. So we'll do it a different day. Yeah. Yeah, that's a different presentation, so can't get the camera to work.
So is that it?
That's it.
You're done?
It's the Superintendent's report.
Okay, all right. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Hi. My name is Paul Goldstein. I'm a teacher at the high school, past president of the Lake Forest Education Association. I just wanted to make a few comments. I had seen the last board meeting, and Reese asked a question that we've been asking for a while now, and that is, you know, why are we open on Jewish holidays? Why are we closed on non-Jewish holidays? The question in general about the calendar and when we close, when we open. There wasn't a really good answer then, which isn't a problem from my perspective. What I'd like to suggest is maybe a way to come up with an answer as a district. Unlike a lot of other things that are, for example, in the collective bargaining agreement, the decision as to whether to open school or close school is reserved exclusively for a school board. You can get recommendations from LFEA, from Mike, from Shayla, from parents, from the community, but at the end of the day, the board decides, "Are we open or are we closed?" And you have to have a justification when it comes to religious holidays because of the First Amendment issues implicated in it. So the question is, how do you figure out what the answer to the question is? You can obviously look at what we've done in the past, but the question is, going forward, what are we going to do in the future and why? And so what I would like to suggest is that you have an agenda item in the September board meeting where you do a discussion and you get feedback. Shayla mentioned that there are lots of different perspectives on this issue, and I think the board should hear them. And once you have heard them, you can then go on record and say, "District 115 is opening on these days and closing on these days, and this is the rationale why." And I think it's very important that you do that process because the rationale reflects who we are as a school, what our beliefs are, what our values are. And, you know, to Shayla's credit, a lot of the things we've done in the last two years, we've changed things that have been that way literally for decades. Because someone came in and said, "What is our current practice, and is this best practice? And does this reflect who we are in 2017 or not?" And so when the LFEA originally brought this up in January, Cindy Collier and I, who is the current president, you know, that was the spirit in which we brought it up. It's not an LFEA issue, it's not an administration issue, it's an issue that affects really the entire district, all the students, all the staff, all the parents. And again, it's not really anything that the CBA addresses. The only thing in the CBA is, if school is in session, what is the accommodation that the district provides teachers? But the preliminary question is whether school is open or closed. And our CBA doesn't address that. No CBA addresses it. Because, again, that is a responsibility and a right that's reserved strictly for the school board. Because you alone, the seven of you, represent the entire community. And the question, whether to be open or closed on any religious holiday, is a question that impacts the whole community, which is why you need to decide it. So again, I'm only here to suggest a way to go forward to try to answer this question in a deliberate and responsible and reflective way is to have a discussion item. Later on, maybe you have an action item. Maybe you change the calendar going forward, maybe you don't. But at least get the input from various stakeholder groups, from perspectives, so you can say, "Okay, I know how people feel about this, and now we're going to make a decision, and here's the rationale behind it." Thank you for your time. Have a good summer.
Thank you, Paul. Any other members? Okay, we now move on to the reports part of the meeting. First up, what was that? Should we move Jeff around? Should we do the foundation report first so Jeff could? I'm sure he wants to sit through the whole meeting, yeah. Foundation report? Jeff?
in which we brought it up. It's not an LFEA issue. It's not an administration issue. It's an issue that affects really the entire district, all the students, all the staff, all the parents. And again, it's not really anything that the CBA addresses. The only thing in the CBA is, if school is in session, what is the accommodation that the district provides teachers? But the preliminary question is whether school is open or closed. And our CBA doesn't address that. No CBA addresses it. Because again, that is a responsibility and a right that's reserved strictly for the school board. Because you alone, the seven of you, represent the entire community. And the question, whether to be open or closed on any religious holiday, is a question that impacts the whole community, which is why you need to decide it. So again, I'm only here to suggest a way to go forward to try to answer this question in a deliberate and responsible and reflective way is to have a discussion item. Later on, maybe you have an action item. Maybe you change the calendar going forward. Maybe you don't. But at least get the input from various stakeholder groups, from perspectives. So you can say, okay, I know how people feel about this. And now we're gonna make a decision. And here's the rationale behind it. Thank you for your time. Have a good summer.
Thank you, Paul. Any other members? Okay, we now move on to the reports part of the meeting. First up. What was that? Should we move Jeff around? Should we do the foundation report first so Jeff could? I'm sure he wants to sit through the whole meeting. Yeah. The foundation report? Jeff?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you guys from a different side of the table. Just to remind you all and for the folks at home, my name is Jeff Volker. I'm the incoming chairman of the Lake Forest High School Foundation. And this is our annual update, kind of reports to the board on how we did this year, some of our successes, some of our opportunities. I would also like to recognize I found that having Joe here tonight to talk about the Business Incubator was fortuitous because Nikki Romberg is our upcoming or incoming vice chair of the Business Incubator, the person who's going to be tasked with finding all of those coaches and mentors and helping coordinate Pitch Night for the next year. So it's nice that she's here. And I want to recognize Nikki because she helped last year and is going to do a good job this year. So. Do I need a clicker or do I just? I don't know whose that is. All right, while Anne's, all right. Fair enough. It's at the very end. So let's. Let's go all the way to the top. All right. I promise you, this will be quick. I know you guys have got a long evening. So we'll make this quick. So real quickly, I just want to give everybody an overview. Most of you probably are familiar with this, but just in case. We celebrate our 15th anniversary this year. The foundation started in 2002. It was a partnership between the board, the administration, and 11 parents who wanted to find ways to enhance taxpayer dollars relative to providing opportunities at the high school. And as a result, our mission was and remains to provide funding for resources necessary to support and enrich, enrich the educational experiences of the students, faculty, and staff of Lake Forest High School. I would suggest that a secondary mission of ours is to find ways to work with the staff and with the administration to come up with resources that help keep our kids competitive in an ever-changing, innovative world. And we talked a little bit earlier about sending kids off to college. I'm sending my oldest off to college this year. And, you know, it's very important in today's day and age, when you're competing with kids from all around the world to get into colleges, that you have a story, that you have something you can bring to the party that is unique and that helps separate you. And as a foundation, we see that as an opportunity to work with you, to work with the administration at the high school, to find ways to create programming, to create curriculum, to create resources that will allow our kids to have those stories. The Business Incubator is a perfect example of that. We look for more opportunities as, as time goes on. It's also nice to point out that we are one of two parent organizations at the high school that affects every student. And that's not to suggest the other parent organizations aren't as important or don't play as big a role in their worlds. But the APT and the foundation do impact every student that comes through the doors. So as parents are looking for ways to contribute their time and their money, we would hope they would consider the fact that anything they donate to the foundation does indeed affect everyone at the high school. Okay, since 2002, we have awarded over, well, just, just under $2 million in grants. And that's across more than 230 unique and individual grants. So that's fantastic. And then some of the examples of where we've made a difference recently, we talked about the Business Incubator, the Maker Space that's downstairs in the basement. We provided a great deal of the technology to bring that space together. A couple of years back, we've done a lot of work with the Special Education Department to make sure they have the resources to more effectively work with their students. Last year, we put in place the 21st Century Learning Lab for Social Studies to, again, provide better project-based learning opportunities, a collaborative workspace for the Social Studies Department. We helped fund a lot of the remodel work that went on with the College Counseling and Resource Center. Several years back, we helped with buying Chromebooks for the lending library. I don't know how many of you know that we have a prairie garden on the north or the south side of the building. It's actually a really neat living laboratory for botany and environmental science students to use to learn about prairie environment. And we helped fund that two years ago. And then we do a variety of professional development initiatives. We had the Rush Neuro Behavior Executive Functioning Program that we did last year that was very successful, very popular. We sent, helped send teachers to various conferences and so forth. So that's some things that we do or have done, I should say. This one's tough to read, but we've gotten a lot of very positive feedback from teachers and from staff. Dr. Holland's been a huge supporter. And Mr. Puleo's been a huge supporter, but others relative to the work and the impact that we've made at the high school. So it's exciting to see that the teachers recognize that we make a difference. Okay, so last year, how'd we do last year? Well, we did great. We did fine. Last year, we raised just over $175,000 for the high school. And you can see how that broke down. In terms of actual personal donations, we received little under $84,000 from Lake Forest families, friends, foundations, local foundations. And we actually had the Class of 86 give us $1,300 as leftover from their alumni fund. So that's kind of neat too. And we'll try and mine that going forward as well. Our annual luncheon that we have every spring, every April, brought in just about another $54,000. In conjunction with Pitch Night and with our luncheon, we ask community businesses to help with sponsorships in exchange for marketing opportunities, advertising, and so forth. This year, that brought in $35,000, which was the highest amount we've been able to raise so far. And then every November, we have Foundation Month. And we use opportunities to go out with local businesses and do, you know, with Chipotle and places like that, you know, you come here for a night. That brought in another $2,500. So hundreds, a little over $175,000 in total last year. One of the things we're really excited about is last year, we actually were able to get a participation rate of 35%, which says 35% of high school families donated to the foundation. That's our highest number yet. It represented about 392 families. That's the most families we've ever had, which is especially nice to see in a declining enrollment situation. So even though enrollment has declined, we're actually continuing to grow participation. Online registration is a big part of that, but hopefully some of the work we've done in other areas is helping as well. Okay, let's talk a little bit about grants real quickly. Back in May, Dr. Holland and Mr. Simic talked a little bit about our Grant Day that we had in late April. Just to highlight that, this year, we awarded $230,000 in grants. That is the highest amount of money we've given to the high school in any one year. So that's fantastic. Now, you could sit there and say, well, you only brought in $175,000. How can you donate $230,000? We take the grant process extremely seriously. We have a committee that works with the individual departments at the high school, works with Dr. Holland, to vet, to solicit, and to truly understand what is it that the departments need? How does that make sense? How will our donors feel relative to supporting these grants? So the fact that we had $230,000 this year suggests that in the past, we haven't, we don't grant everything that comes through. There are a lot of things that come through that we say, it's only going to affect five kids. I'm not sure that's the best use of our money. So I think this is a great way of showing the community and showing the board that we don't just grant everything that comes across. We will have some money that carries over from year to year that we have available. But when we do have some wonderful ideas, we aren't afraid to fund them. And this year, we had some terrific ideas. This amount represents, as you can see, almost $35,000 more than our previous year. It's $88,000 more than we granted last year. That, that date's wrong, should be last year. We did 19 unique grants across nine different departments. The exciting thing is we had applications from over 42 different faculty members. So again, faculty is engaged and we've made a real effort. Our grant committee makes a real effort to get out and meet with the departments. And the good news is, across all these grants, all the students at Lake Forest High School will be impacted. I won't spend a lot of time, but here are the grants. So in English, we've got wireless interactive classrooms that we have granted, the Forest Scout, which has been, I think, a tremendous program, both in terms of the quality of the writing, the coursework that it does, but just the product and the way it gets people engaged at the high school. We help cover the printing costs of that. In science, we're purchasing some new biotech lab equipment. We're buying high-speed cameras to use in physics for, to capture motion. It's 1,000 frames per second. So you can truly see literally a drop of water as it starts and then hits and all of the physics aspects that go along with it. And we're buying 21 Pasco universal interface boxes that the ones that we had bought, I don't know, five to 10 years ago have become a bit obsolete. So we're buying new ones for them. So for professional development, we're sending teachers to the Newbury Teacher Consortium, which we've done for a number of years. We're buying cameras for the art class to support photography, to support art appreciation of a variety of different art classes. We're also helping to redesign and upgrade Art Room 120. We're buying new tables and new furniture, things that have gotten pretty chopped up over the years. In the Special Education Department, we're refurbishing the Emotional Disabilities Classroom. We're helping with that. And we're sending four teachers to a social thinking critical training program over the summer, I believe. In business ed, we're creating kind of a second Business Incubator room downstairs, Room 19. So we'll have a space not necessarily as technologically advanced as what you see upstairs on the first floor, but getting close. We continue to provide funding for Pitch Night as well as for what's called the Minimum Viable Product, which is the process during the Business Incubator class where kids have to actually present some physical idea of what they're trying to build. And they need some money to come up with that. So we provide that. In the library, we're doing a lot this year to help transform the library. The second floor of the commons on the west side, we are going to transform that space, or the school's going to transform that space in what they call the Collaborative Learning Commons. And we are donating or providing money to help in that effort. We're buying four collaboration tables, which are similar to what's in the Business Incubator, so that the library has a place for people to sit down and collaborate, similar to what they do in the Business Incubator. We're putting in a sound studio in the library to help with podcasts and recording opportunities and things like that for kids. And then at wellness, we're buying new roller blades. This is a joint effort. That's because the roller blades that we have, I guess it's one of the most popular wellness classes or one of the most popular units they do. But the roller blades are pretty stinky and old and decrepit. So we're buying new ones for them. And then along with the Boosters Club, we're buying iPads for teachers and coaches to use in the wellness classes as well. And then last, or not last, but I think a really big opportunity for us is we're helping to improve and upgrade the Student Services Suite, which right now is, for what the kids need that want to utilize that space, really doesn't meet their needs. It's not the safe space, I think, that we would like to create. And so that's a big one for us. We felt very strongly that we wanted to help support the efforts that Dr. Holland brought forth and others to, to make a space that is far more welcoming to kids that are experiencing difficulties or having some issues that they, they need to, some help and support for. And the last but not least, we're continuing the work that we started last year. And there's another seminar that we're going to do relative to the executive functioning opportunities. So that's what the $230,000 went for this year. And I think all of these are frankly exciting and fantastic opportunities at the high school that will help our kids create those stories. So looking ahead, what are we working on for next year? Well, we're going to do a quick, over the summer and early in the year, we're going to take a look at, at rebranding. We are, as you know, from a purely business perspective, we're always in a bit of a competition for people's wallets. And we're, been made aware that people just aren't as familiar with the foundation as we'd like them to be, as we need them to be. So we have to figure out ways to brand the work that we do and who we are so that it's much more noticeable. People, you know, really sit up and understand what we do, improve awareness. We want to continue to grow the family participation rate and try and get up over the 400 family mark. That would be great. Continue to try and increase donation levels. Like I said, it's in a declining enrollment environment, but we've been successful to, to overcome that. Want to make sure people still are aware of Foundation Month in November. That's in conjunction with our fall mailing that goes out at the beginning of the month, also with the teacher, teacher-parent conferences. So we do that month to try and gain more awareness for the foundation. The spring luncheon, we'll want to optimize that. That's already on the books for Wednesday, April 18. So go ahead and put that on your calendars. Expect to see you all there. That'd be lovely. And then Joe alluded to it a little earlier, but we are doing some changes to the curriculum in Business Incubator. So we'll continue to work with the administration, the staff, on repositioning our role in that. But we'll continue to support it. So the last question is, how can you guys help, both from a board administration perspective? Well, first of all, we really would love for you guys to be a cheerleader for our organization. I mean, I realize in your role, you have to be a cheerleader for all the organizations, and that's fine. But when you're out in the community, knowing what you know in terms of where we've made a difference, where we've made an impact, continue to help people in the community see and understand where we make a difference and how we make a difference for their kids. And frankly, for the schools and for resale value and all that fun stuff. We certainly would love that. Your presence and involvement, both in terms of coming to meetings or coming to our events and, and being involved that way is great. And obviously, we'd certainly love your financial involvement. But you all have all supported us in a variety of reasons. Mr. Lane was very generous with his company to provide a sponsorship for luncheon. And I know many of you have come to our events and have supported us. So thank you for that. You know, we look for you for direction. We rely very heavily on what's inside the building. We'd love to hear what opportunities exist from a perspective of outside the building, from more of a strategic, as you put together your strategic plan and as you continue to implement the strategic plan. If there are ways for us to help in that regard, whether that's through raising funds or whether that's through helping to get community engagement around a particular project, we'd love to help. I mean, as Mr. Simic mentioned, we kind of went outside of our comfort zone a couple of years ago. We're willing to go outside our comfort zone again. Now, last but not least, engagement. And in that regard, I would like to say thank you because I understand we're going to have a board liaison this year, which I'm excited about. And I've been told it's going to be a three-headed monster. Is that correct? Or? Wonderful. So welcome, Mrs. Skryling, Dr. Nemecus, and Ms. Davis. We're excited to have you guys join us this year. And hopefully you won't need to see me again next year because you guys will all be making reports back to the board. So that'd be great. That's it for me. Any questions?
Jeff, thank you very much for everything you do.
My pleasure. I'm looking forward to it. And I would like to recognize Liz Brandell, who was in this seat for the last three years and did just an absolute fantastic job in reaching record levels of donations and, and grants. So thanks to her.
Hey, Jeff, just a quick question. Any thought of working with District 67 to get them on board? So you were talking about, you know, families knowing more about the high school foundation. But if you've already worked them into the equation so that when the kids graduate from eighth grade, they know exactly where to keep coming for?
Yeah, we're a little unique in that we have to work with both 67 and 65. And that is an opportunity. But at the same time, we are not allowed to do much solicitation, any solicitation outside of District 115. We do provide incoming eighth grade, or incoming freshmen in January of their eighth grade year with a mailing, just to let people know what we do and how we continue the work that the Spirit does in 67 and that the Alliance does in 65 at the high school. So to continue to support us at that next level. But we are a bit limited into who we can get out in front of and solicit. We have people in the administration that don't allow us to do that. I'm kidding. It's, it's, thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mike, is there a strategic plan, end of year report?
There is. And Dr. Holland has got a number of slides to show you. A couple of the, a couple of the things that I would like to say as introduction for this is that obviously, the high school's had an extremely good year, or had an extremely good year this past year. The implementation of the new high school schedule, the change in the lunch day. While neither of those were, were perfect, I don't know how frankly, they could have been much more flawlessly executed. Because doing lunch for 1,700 kids is no mean feat in addition to staff, let alone scheduling, creating a new schedule for 1,700 students. And the Business Incubator and other classes like it. One of the main advantages of the schedule is that we had a dramatic increase in the number of students that were able to take our business classes and other electives, as well as students able to take a study hall and other things. But there are other notable achievements and things worth bringing to, bring to the board as a wrap-up for this year. Dr. Holland?
Thank you. So this has been a dynamic year. A lot has taken place. And as you will see through this update and in the 12-page report, a lot of what has taken place this year has been at a foundational level, getting some systems in place. While you'll see some, some data and some percentages and shifts and those things, you'll also notice that a lot of it is about how we're setting the tone for our learning environment from now moving forward. And so I do want to mention that our strategic plan is aligned with groups like the foundation, APT. We could not do a lot of the things in our strategic plan without the help of the foundation. And so we really think about leveraging all of our parent groups and all of the generous, all of the generous donations from the community to, to make this happen. So it is truly a collective effort. So thank you for everything. What I'm going to do is just highlight our goals for the year and just give a few things that have happened. There's a lot of detail in the report. But I'll start with our first goal, which is that all Lake Forest High School students will have access to a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Of course, all of our goals stem from our milestones, which are laid out in public. They're focused on achievement, instruction, assessment, talent, partnership, and environment. You'll notice in this report that next to each goal, that there's a list of the milestones that we were able to address. And so our curriculum mapping work, to have a guaranteed and viable curriculum, has been a priority for us. And this is really naming explicitly what we expect kids to know, to know and be able to do. And mapping is important because it makes learning transparent, achievement and success in a class is no in a class is no longer a secret, you don't have to have information from a sibling who took the class before or ends with the teachers. Our goal is for every kid to know what's expected and have a pathway laid out for them to be successful in our classes, and that's really what our mapping work is. And so, it's a huge undertaking, and as we continue to roll out new classes across the entire school, of course, mapping work is constantly taking place and it's evolving, and so, we might make gains this year, but because we're rolling out new classes, we still have new classes to map out, so I just want to name that. And so, every year that we look at the percentages, we're really thinking about what's left with the classes that we currently have in place, while also factoring in new courses that we're offering. And so, we definitely met our goal in terms of the 80% in the specific areas that we had outlined, having unit overviews in Atlas, a common assessment, and learning targets. You'll notice a spring, a fall, winter, and spring, and the details in terms of the percentages, 80% was connected to two of those areas, knowing that our development and implementation of learning targets did not happen until a few years ago, a couple of years ago, and so we had some catch-up to do there, which is why it was not named as 80%, although we are pretty close to it. And so, we've actually made huge gains throughout the year. At the mid-year report, I know there were some questions around like our progress, we had some time designated to do this work, and our teachers really found it beneficial to have concentrated amounts of time to really focus in on learning. Additionally, in this milestone, is the implementation of our Tier One supports, which has been a huge success throughout the year. With the change to our schedule, we implemented personal learning time, making support from teachers accessible to every kid. We also implemented and solidified our departmental resource centers, where our teachers are available throughout the day to support kids with their needs at a drop-in rate. We also expanded our peer tutoring program, and in the mid-year report, we gave more detailed snapshots of what the data collection tools look like and all of that, and so, that's been a huge success, and it's actually decreased the amount of students who need more intensive supports, because we have this foundational supports in place. Our next goal is that all Lake Forest High School students will be college and career-ready. We've rolled out a four-year career exploration plan, where all of our students, right now we have interest outlined for students ninth through 12th grade, we're working on figuring out how to capture that with seniors. Many of them know what they want to do, or they've been a part of our mentoring, shadowing or internship opportunities already, so we're working with the counselors to figure out how to continue to offer an experience for seniors, because not every senior knows what they want to do, and we know that they're going to change their mind several times when they hit college as well, so, but we've captured 75% of career interest. We are increasing, we have increased our open doors program, and we know that it will increase, because we're creating more opportunities for students to access that support. Right now, our students can only participate in our open doors program, which is a job shadowing program, during the days that they have off of school, and so you're really tapping into kids who want to use a day off of school to job shadow. Even though we've been able to increase that, we're trying to create situations where students, once we identify an experience that they receive some type of release or way to go during the school day, it's going to be monitored, of course, but we want to create more opportunities for that. Additionally, we have about 13 students right now who are involved in a pilot summer internship program, where we've identified internship opportunities for them this summer. Jim Sullivan, our assistant principal, is overseeing that, and the goal was to have like three kids, and we have 13, and so that's been pretty cool this summer. We are continuing to expand or to engage conversations around dual credit, and we continue to expand our advanced placement. There's another slide that I'm going to talk through, some of that work, the scores just came in, so we'll provide the board with an update, but they literally, I got an email about it today, and so, it's not in this report, and they haven't been unpacked fully, and so that information will be forthcoming. But our students continue to, we continue to decrease the number of students who are dropping levels, and by that, they feel like they're not going to be successful where they're currently at. We've done a lot of work to help students and families identify each student's next level of challenge. We're trying to build confidence in students, a lot of our students are way more prepared than they think they are, but they're comparing themselves to their peers, and everyone looks like, oh, they know more than I do, when in fact, our kids are very well-equipped and prepared to be in the classes that they're in. A lot of this has been really around building confidence and also engaging them in struggle, and keeping them at the table, willing to endure when they hit a rough spot, knowing what to do to keep moving forward. So, our AP involvement has also increased, as we've talked about before, we have a lot more students trying their next level of challenge and being successful, and I just want to name that successful, success sometimes comes in the scores, but a lot of students also learn a lot, whether they score well or not, however they define well, that's the appropriate placement for them, and a lot of learning is still taking place. And there's a ton of research out there that mentions that students are going to learn more by being challenged in that space than not being in that space, and so, we've really been trying to change the narrative. Yes, we want all of our kids to experience success, but we're really trying to make sure that their, their learning is at the core of that experience. We did see a slight dip in the number of students taking their course-related exam this year, and I'm going to talk a little more about that when I actually show the numbers. Placement, I remember mid-year, we were talking about having a placement exam for our incoming freshmen, we rolled that out, and that's been a part of our student growth process, that was pretty successful. We've identified opportunities for improvement for next year, but in all, that's laying the foundation for our entire district-wide growth model. We adopted the SAT suite, incoming freshmen took that, every student enrolled or coming to Lake Forest High School, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders also took that suite. And so, this aligns with our work with ECRAs as well, is really capturing, what does it mean to support student growth across every student in the building, and what does that look like? Adopting the SAT suite has helped us be able to do that. College, career, and life readiness, what I love about the presentation that the students made, is that it really spoke to the life readiness component of our work, whether it's our adoption of our SEL standards, our work around executive functioning, communicating, dealing with conflict, problem-solving, all of that has been at the core of our work in the school, and it's also been a part of the personal learning profile that we are working, that we've been working with ECRAs to establish. That work is ongoing, and we're constantly, I was talking to them today, constantly revising and tweaking things to make sure everything is ready to go for the start of the school year, and we have a plan to roll it out over time to different groups, being very intentional about what that looks like as well. But our personal learning profile really provides a snapshot of student growth and progress, but really captures what does it mean to have a diploma from Lake Forest High And I'm going to revisit now the AP participation scores. I mentioned that we've been seeing increased, increased numbers in students requesting courses, the numbers of exams taken, students taking, you can notice that many of our students take multiple courses. The total number of students taking at least one AP exam was 657, but when you look at the course enrollment, 1,574. The next column, percentage of students in AP taking the course exam, it dipped to 87.5, and that is, that just means a student, if I'm in AP Biology, that I took the relevant or the associated exam, that's just naming that I took that exam. And after looking at those numbers and questioning why there was a dramatic drop, I just respectfully want to say, there's a lot of things that go into that, and I detail some of it in the board report. You always have kids who don't feel well and don't show up for the exam, but this year, we had more than ever, a lot of students at the last minute saying they did not want to take the exam, and one of the main reasons was because they said that, we had approximately 30 students who requested a refund at the last minute before the exam, and I have the breakdown of numbers, but the majority of the students mentioned it's because their college does not require them to take the test in order, it doesn't affect their college admissions. They wanted to be, they needed to be in the class to get into the college, but taking the test did not have a benefit for them. And in looking at the number of students, several of them were enrolled in multiple AP classes, and so they asked for refunds in that area. Additionally, we weren't as stringent in saying no, I mean, we could have gone either way, and I don't know the percentages in the past, where if a student comes and asks for a refund, if they are not given a refund, if they'll still take the test or not, but we know that we need to have more conversations with families around that. Additionally, I think during the time of the AP exams and coming off a sort of emotional time in the community with some of the changes to the board, I think a lot of the community discourse had an impact on some of what our students said was the reason why they didn't want to take the exam, some of the frustrations and concerns about the score, the score's going to impact them, their perception of themselves, or the teacher, all of those things, and so, I just want to say that there are a lot of different factors, but kids are listening, and it does impact them, and so, we can definitely do more on our part to make sure that we're supporting our kids through this process.
You still had an absolute increase in the number of students taking exams, so...
Yes, this is a positive story, but I'm being open about some of the areas that we can also continue to improve, especially because this is a dip in an area, some of our kids decided not to take the test. The test isn't everything, but we did do some problems, or we did do our homework and try to find out what was going on.
Shayla?
Yes.
Is there any thought to linking the final exam and the AP exam and a course grade in terms of getting out of the final exam? Because I know from personal experience in my household, you know, having the number of AP exams and then having to sit again for the number of final exams with, you know, a good grade was an extra burden, and that may be part of the metric that falls into this too.
Okay. I know there have been some conversations and frustrations, because a kid will take an AP exam, and then kids prioritize what they're going to focus on, so there's a lot of missing classes at times, and we'll talk about that when we get to attendance, calling out of classes, and then feeling like, I just took this huge exam, why do I have to take another one? And to be honest, it plays out differently across departments, so that's another area where we need a little more consistency in terms of what our expectations are for kids who are taking these courses. Our next goal, all Lake Forest High School students will be college and career-ready. This, again, connects with the previous slide, but one of the areas that falls under this goal is our attendance procedure changes, and there's a review of the changes that we plan to implement this year, this coming year, in terms of attendance. In the, in the, in the report, there's more detail regarding why, but part of this, to me, is really about creating, is an issue of safety and security, creating a safe learning environment for all Lake Forest High School students, knowing where our kids are during the day, having a system of accountability, but also reinforcing that being in class is very important, and instruction matters. And so, we're aligning our attendance policy and procedures with ISBE and school code. Some things are not optional, and this is one of them, where we really do have to make sure that we're following what's outlined for us by the state, or we do put our students in a vulnerable, and families in a vulnerable situation in terms of their credits, as well as daily attendance. Additionally, I know for many students, there's a concern, and I think everyone understands student safety and knowing where students are during the day, and making sure we're responsible for that, but I know for our students, there's a huge concern around privileges, especially senior privileges, and those things not going away. I do want to let everyone know that, to the extent that we can maintain the privileges, we are partnering with our students and stakeholder groups to maintain them, but we can't do that at the expense of not knowing where kids are, and so there's that balance, and our plan is to openly communicate these changes with all stakeholder groups, and between now, the start of school year, and a little beyond the start of school, continue to have open meetings, where we're partnering, just like we've done with all the other large changes we've engaged, to make sure we're getting feedback and we're, we're being open about the changes and problem-solving along the way. So, I just want everyone to know that is a part of the plan, and you'll be hearing more about that. Additionally, one of the positive, another positive aspect of this, is that embedded in our procedures, we're asking more questions as a district. If a student is missing a couple of days of school, I think it's important, number one, that we let them know that we noticed that they're not there, let them know the importance of being there, but also ask, is there anything we can do to support you? Is there something else going on? So, built into our procedures, similar to our other supports, is a tiered approach to really capturing what's happening with our kids. And sometimes we know, and sometimes we have no idea, that there's other things going on with students that's getting in the way of them attending, and so, I do want to name that that's a part of that as well. Our next goal, all Lake Forest High School students will participate in a minimum of two extracurricular or co-curricular activities, clubs, or sports. We've done a lot of work in creating a data collection and monitoring system, which also feeds into our personal learning profile. During the school year, we had 1,430 students participate in at least one extracurricular activity, and that's 86% of our student body. Of the 1,430 students, 1,084 students participated in two or more, and that's about 65% of our students. We have a very active student body. We've noticed, and part of the importance of collecting this information, is figuring out how we can be better. We have 240 students that have been identified as not participating in anything, and when we did some homework to find out, we know that some students are involved in church groups or other community organizations, so they're connected, but they're not connected through the high school. Additionally, we know there are some students who we're not offering things that they're interested in, and so, we've been trying to find out more about that. We also have noticed a correlation between some of our students who struggle with attendance, who struggle with some discipline issues, a range of different things that also aren't connected. And so, we're learning a lot from our students about ways to connect them, but also really thinking about student engagement. How can we connect more students to more positive experiences, but letting their voice drive what we create for them? And so, our plans, we do have plans also to increase opportunities and participation for our students in our ELS and transition program. We are partnering with various organizations to make sure that our students in some of our special ed programs have equal access and opportunities to participate in extracurricular activities as well, so we're excited to roll that out next year. And this is the goal that will probably look, the language will probably be a little more condensed next year, but all of our students will actively engage in learning, developing, and applying executive functioning skills, 21st century skills, and habits of mind. And really, as I mentioned during our mid-year report, this is... And really, as I mentioned during our mid-year report, this is related to our adoption of social-emotional learning standards. We have a wonderful opportunity. We were on a phone conference today with Rush Neurobehavioral Center. Because we partner with them as a district, I'll start by saying, there's a huge void nationally in having assessments that really let, that speaks to high school. And so there are a lot of assessments around SEL learning, or social-emotional learning in elementary and middle schools, but high schools, it's pretty much crickets when it comes to that, which is why we've struggled so much as a district. We tried to piecemeal different surveys together to figure out if this is speaking to different aspects of SEL, of the SEL standards, but it's been very difficult. Rush has noticed clearly this void, and they're asking us to consider partnering with them in the creation of an assessment that they would eventually roll out nationally, but because we already partner with them around a lot of our work, they reached out to see if we're interested. So we just had a preliminary conversation today, which is groundbreaking work. We had a preliminary conversation today, and we're going to think about what this means, and if we decide to move forward with it, we'll bring more information back up to the board.
So Shayla, when you're standing up here next year, how will you define success? What would be your definition?
That's the struggle. And I know it's fresh.
Setting up the systems, I mean, would that be?
Part of it is setting up the systems, but how do we know how, it's hard to capture sometimes feelings, how a student feels in school, if they're comfortable, if a lot of this is, students have to be active parts in self-assessing their experiences regarding social-emotional learning, and then to try to figure out if they've made any growth. I think where we have to start, and this is outlined in our plan, is explicitly teaching some skills and how to navigate different situations, how to problem solve, how to deal with anxiety and depression. A lot of times, we expect kids to know how to do it somehow, but we never talk with them and to get them to think about how they're feeling, and then what to do when you're feeling this way. And so a part of our three-year well-being plan is to implement those standards and explicit instruction across all of our grade levels. And this will show up in our Wellness for Life, our health curriculum, and other, and throughout our PE department. But we realize we can't expect kids to grow in an area if we're not explicitly teaching them and intentional about where it's supposed to show up. So that's how we're starting, and then we're hoping that through our partnership with Rush or identifying an assessment, that we can now, once we have some things in place, get a sense of student growth.
Thank you.
And the highlights. So a lot has happened, and I remember at the start of the year when we were talking about our goals, we were like, if we narrowed down to only a few, then it won't seem like we're doing as much. I'm like, there's plenty going on. There's some key areas of focus, but there's a lot that happened. We implemented our new school day. We implemented a brand-new faculty evaluation model, as well as a support staff evaluation model. We also implemented TeachBoost to capture our evaluation model. This is huge work for a district, especially all of these things happening at once. We also implemented our growth model. The great thing about this is although it's a lot, it has been a lot of work, our faculty evaluation model and our student growth model go hand in hand. So we were able to not piecemeal anything, we were able to implement it all and help everyone see the connections between them. We expanded food services, which is a huge hit, and we have new course offerings and the development of a theater department. Joe Puglio is actually one of our theater teachers. And so we're rolling out those courses. We've actually adopted a learning management system, and that's a system where during our rollout, and we have a plan for our rollout, we have over half of our faculty and staff who have engaged in a pilot, or who are going through that right now. And this is a system, just imagine, we have, every period of the day, a student has to figure out where teacher houses their assignments, where they get their grades. If they miss the day, where do they go for that information? Teachers find different ways to communicate with students, but this is one consistent management system that will roll out across entire school, that will be adopted by all faculty and staff, that students will be working with one system. Parents will be working with one system, teachers will be working with one system. And this is a part, in many ways, connected to our executive functioning's work, as well as just trying to ease up distress and lessening the burden of students having to figure out everyone's expectations, when we could actually have a system in place where it houses all of this information for our families. We've expanded all of our tiered supports, not only our tier-one supports, but our reading ELL services, our special ed services. We've made huge strides in special ed, decreasing the amount of students who are identified for supports, and that's in direct relationship to having tiered supports. The more supports we have in place, the more likely it is that students will not have to need special ed services. So we have some things in place to support that. And as you all know, we recently adopted a revised school calendar and exam schedule two years out. And so a lot has happened this year, and I can say it could not have happened without all of your support, as well as all the stakeholder groups in the community. I look at this list and everything else in the strategic plan, and it truly is a community effort that made all this thing, all of these things possible, so thank you.
Thank you, Shayla. A lot of work.
Yes.
Take a couple days off. Any questions, Shayla? Comments?
I have, it is really good work to you and to everybody who's been working hard at the district and at the high school. It's awesome. Love seeing this. You mentioned the SAT suite that we had, that the kids took this year for the first time, and you mentioned AP scores you just got in. Will we be seeing a summary of the SAT suite indicators, just like we will for the, I'd just be curious to see that. Are we going to see that?
Our SAT suite has been built into our growth model, and so we communicated out where we landed in terms of the percentages to the, to our teachers, because that impacts them in their evaluations, as well as all of our evaluations are actually connected to that. Families receive the scores in that way, but we have not created a formal presentation. In the fall, we do a presentation where we talk about typically is ACT and SAT, that information will be embedded in that. And also during that time, because our director of teaching and learning is working on teasing out the skills of those assessments and how they're showing up in other areas of the building. So that's forthcoming.
Okay. Yeah, and I had gotten them as a parent. I was just curious if there's bigger learnings and things.
Definitely is. That's coming in the fall.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Shayla, I know the hot button topic this past spring was the AP courses. It's my understanding, the proportion of five fours, threes, et cetera, hasn't particularly changed, so that effectively, the absolute number we're getting is much higher because it mirrors the increased number of children taking the test, correct?
Correct.
So I think when the new scores come in, you compile them, I think that would be great, because I know there's some people who feel we're hiding behind lumping a three-plus rather than giving the information, and I think, you know, we should just be as transparent as we can. I think that would be beneficial to the community.
I agree. We haven't looked at the scores yet. I just got the email, so.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm not.
But absolutely.
I just, when it does come back to us, I think it would be nice to be able to see that, because I know that's a piece that people are interested in.
Okay. Thank you.
I wanted to, I wanted to say that looking at this summary is a testament to not only how you've inspired change, but how you've managed change, because I could imagine, this is your vision of what we should be doing, and I could imagine the organization getting to the point of being fatigued, but instead, we watch the kids come in, we watch the parents come in, and they're excited. And so the fact that you've been able to articulate this and deliver it, and to keep everyone engaged without fatiguing them, is such a testament to what a terrific visionary and leader that you are. I was thinking particularly in relation to the attendance policy, which in some ways is a no-brainer, right? You've said, you're responsible for the safety of our kids. We have to know where our kids are, and we have to be compliant with what the state says. As a parent, that's one of the ones where I would probably be tempted to say, because I said so. And so it was really fascinating to me to hear you say, I want to reach out to the stakeholders, I want to be sure that we're being sensitive to the seniors' needs for privileges, and that we will, you know, we will make changes as we go. And I thought, that's the way Shayla approaches everything. And so thank you for bringing all of this to us, and thank you for managing the change, which is as important as saying we need to go this way, but getting everybody to go along with you, it's extraordinary.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying what I wanted to say so nicely.
I was going to say, Shayla, I know Meg just graduated. I think you've really done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
And continuing to do a phenomenal job.
Thank you, Shayla. So we have a post issuance tax compliance report.
It might be just exciting, Shayla's report.
Almost.
I will tell you that. So hold on to your seats here. Included in your packet is a memo and a letter that I wrote as compliance officer for our bonds. When we adopted the 2013 GO debt certificates, we also adopted a bond record-keeping policy that says that we would do all the requirements to make sure our tax, our bonds are still tax exempt. So what does that mean? Any bondholders that received interest from us, it's tax exempt for federal income tax purposes for them. That's a reason why they want to buy our bonds. This report just states that we are in compliance with everything outlined by the IRS, to say that they are still exempt from taxes. So that's it.
No action required on our part?
No action required.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next, committee reports. Education Committee, Leece, anything to report?
No, we haven't met, but it's, since I didn't have a chance to tell Dr. Holland my kudos, it is just, we heard about a lot of these measures in the Education Committee, and it is truly mind-boggling to see how much advancement there's been in this year. So thank you so much for your hard work and for building a great team.
Thanks. Policy Committee, Ted, anything to report? Have you met?
Nope.
Nope.
Haven't met since our last meeting.
Okay. Finance and Ops, Dave?
We did not meet. So we're going to meet in August.
Leazan report. Sally, you want to tell us all the exciting things happening at state level?
I've got a report for you. The big headline, which everybody knows, is that on Thursday, the sixth of last week, the Illinois House of Representatives approved a motion to override Governor Roner's vetoes on three budget bills. Here's what's important for District 115. The first is that there was a passage of a budget, which means that we're going to get some money. What is interesting is that State Bill Six, or Senate Bill Six, which was one of the three bills that were passed, for the first time is appropriating $350 million for new evidence-based funding, and the way that the state is dispersing funds to the various school districts. And we don't know yet what that will mean. I will not make you repeat after me what the evidence-based funding rule is, but essentially the formula says that depending on your district and your geography, each student should be getting a certain amount of money in order for that student to be getting an adequate education. It will be interesting to see how that plays out, because it will tell us things about how District 115 will receive funding from the state going forward, if this evidence-based funding is to perpetuate. So we need to watch that carefully. The second thing is that in overriding the governor's veto, in effect, the legislature took away his insistence on a property tax cap as being one of the requisites to having a budget. It doesn't mean that property tax caps don't remain enormously important to us and something that we'll watch, but in overriding the veto, they have at least an effect for the time being decoupled those things, so we are not looking at that combination. The last thing is that Senate Bill 42 talked about shifting liability for pension funding for state employees, including teachers, to the districts, but at a very high threshold. So it doesn't attach to any teachers who are making more than what the governor makes, so $180,000 a year. So again, what Governor Roner wanted and what he was attaching to his veto was much more significant pension fund shifting to the individual school districts and the property tax cap. And because he was overridden, those two mandates were decoupled. So we will have lots more to talk about in the fall, but for the time being, that's where we are.
Thank you. NSSCD, Ted, anything?
Yeah, let's see. At its last meeting, the NSSCD did pass a 2017, 2018 budget. The FY18 budget is balanced and totals 54.1 million. For us, for all the 18 consortium members, billing rates will remain unchanged for the coming year. For facilities update, for those that haven't been to the NSSCD campus in Highland Park, it's essentially composed of three primary buildings, two consortium owns, and the third is leased from the Cerebral Policy Association. Right now, we're in negotiations to purchase that building from the association, so there'll be more to come with that. At our last meeting, we also reviewed the professional development offerings, course offerings that NSCD provides to the member districts, and these are all at no charge. I bring this up because District 115, for the second year in a row, is the lowest user of any of these free resources. And so I don't know if that's something we want to look at, or you'll make a push for it, because again, they are provided free of charge. That's all I have.
Okay, we're now moving on.
We actually, we do send some people there, but because of some of our concerns around how, whether teachers miss school and go there, we've actually partnered with NSSCD to bring some of their facilitators to the school to run some of the workshops that they offer there, too.
Yes, those are included also.
Okay.
I'm just saying that we might be able to get better utilization.
Thanks. Action items. First one is the adoption of the resolution to display the FY18 tentative budget. Jen, you going to make a presentation?
I was hoping to read all 60 pages.
Cool. Every number in every cell.
At least, at least. No, I will do my best to summarize, because as you know, this is the tentative budget, which means you will see this again in more detail in September. Just want to cover a few things, and let's start with what are the legal requirements, which leads us, we're going to go really fast, to tonight. So legal requirements, this is our budget for July 1 through June 30, so the 17, 18 school year, which is our fiscal year. The requirement is that we must pass a budget by the end of our first quarter, so September 30. Prior to that adoption, we have to publicly place our budget on display. We have to schedule a date and time for a public hearing, and we also need to publish in a newspaper of general circulation a notice of our public hearing. So you actually, the resolution in your packet tonight that you are hopefully approving does all of those things. It's set September 11 at approximately seven o'clock, right here in this building. As our public hearing, we will also have this on display. If anyone would like to come in and review our budget, they are welcome to do so for at least 30 days. Well, between now and September 30, or September 11 is clearly more than 30 days, so we definitely meet that. And that would be the only actual action item that you are taking today. And I say that because we can make changes to this tentative budget up to that, to the point that we adopted in September. And that's important, because some of the things that Sally just mentioned regarding some most recent changes may affect some of the assumptions that I have built into this budget. I was very conservative on state revenue, as you see, and I'm a I was very conservative on state revenue, as you see, and I'm a little more positive than I was when we put this together. So we will continue to monitor those this summer and any other changes. We may or may not make adjustments before we adopt in final, and we will let you know what those changes are. Just want to give a general overview of revenue and expenses, and then talk about our major fund, which is the educational fund. We get revenue from, receive revenue from four sources, local, state, federal, and other. As many of you know, we are a very heavily locally dependent revenue district. Those local sources come primarily from taxes, but they also come from things like tuition fees, earnings on investments, our food service program. All of those are considered part of our local revenue. State funds come in two sources. One is what we call restricted or categorical, which means they are for a specific purpose. And then we also receive general state aid, which by its name just means generally aid from the state to apply as we see fit. We're split about 50/50 on that. Federal, all of our federal revenue is restricted and it's based on either typically grants or associated reimbursements for particular expenses. Other is the other little category, that's intergovernmental agreements, rental incomes, things of that nature. I do add the disclaimer, revenues are allocated to funds based on accounting standards. You'll see I have the same disclaimer on expenses, because I get the question a lot about, the forms are really confusing. And in the 60 pages, I wasn't kidding, there are 60 pages, you get two forms. One is the state form, which is the one that looks like this. That's the required form, and those are based on accounting standards set out by the Illinois State Board of Education, which we're required to follow. The one on top of that, which become more of our district form, is intended to be a little bit more user-friendly. It does add a little bit more narrative than the state form, which has none. But behind that obviously sits our actual budget, which is a line-by-line basis, but you get two looks at it in this particular package. So although we have multiple funds, I really wanted to focus on the educational fund. The educational fund is by and large our largest fund, and if you want to think of, this fund is covering pretty much everything except operations and maintenance, transportation, our Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, it's everything else. It's teachers, support staff, supplies, capital outlay, everything that's in that. On the revenue, it's the majority of our revenue as well. Those other funds are much smaller, so I wanted to devote our time to this. Giving you a year-over-year comparison, our local revenue is projected increase 1.14%. That includes increases to local property taxes and then some of the previously increased fees that the board passed earlier this spring. As you noted, I was not very positive at the time that we put the budget together on the state funds, so we had budgeted a decrease of 16%. That is the one that we most likely will revisit. I was not anticipating that we may receive four payments this year on some of our categoricals because they have a history of late payments. We did just receive our December payments, though, so that was exciting. Those arrived in the last six days of the fiscal year. So we just received those at the end of June. So I'm feeling a little bit more positive. Federal, like I said, that is directly related to grants and/or expenses already incurred. So that will fluctuate from year to year based on those things. An overall increase in the ed fund of .45%. And that's just a graphical representation. If you can see, property taxes are 81.68. Other local that I spoke of, the fees, the tuition, our Little Scouts, our food service, make up 10.59%, so by and large, the bulk of our revenue is from local sources. Not used to the PowerPoint running as a PDF. Some budget assumptions and things related to expenses, like I said, we do classify these, what we call by object. And this is a requirement of the state accounting systems as well. So you'll see, those are the objects, salaries, benefits, purchase services, which include things like consultants, but also anything else. If you're purchasing a product of some nature, you know, plumbing services, repair services, those things, supplies, capital outlay, other object, which is any debt payments or tuition payments for, let's say, an out-of-district placement or to another educational organization, and then termination benefits. And so, how do we budget for them? Expenditures, salaries and benefits, which make up the bulk of our expenditures, are individually based on staffing. So we start with what the staffing requirements are within the building, both from a certified and a non-certified side, and all of the filled positions are budgeted to that individual. So where are they placed on a salary schedule, what their current rate of pay is, are we anticipating any openings or retirements? Anything not filled at the time of budget is based on a normal trend of our typical hire. The benefits part gets a little tricky, because you can see our benefits are up a little bit higher when you look through the budget than I normally would have projected. We actually had great renewals, so it wasn't our percentages, you approved those renewals, I think, in June. But, it's also based on open enrollment, right? So as people are changing their plans, maybe from single to family or among the plans, that will also have an impact on us. So they are based on what the individual has selected. The other categories, usually we use a combination, historical and/or projected expenses and things that we can do trend analysis. There's departmental requests, we actually do receive individual budgets from, let's say, buildings and grounds, food service, athletics. They're all preparing their individual budgets and submitting for review, the principal's budget. Planned initiatives, so these are things that we talk about, and actually Sheila did a really great job, because she pretty much put up verbally, or spoke verbally and put up in the narrative form, all the things that are embedded into our budget, right? So the initiatives, all those changes that she's talking about, those are weaved through what you're going to see in numerical format. Individual student needs, one of the items that Sheila had notated on hers is an expansion of our special education services and the needed services for students in their, in individual bases. So you will see, not at your level, but at our level, we actually have, some of our budgeting is actually down to the student level. We know what those students' needs are, we know where those students are, those needs are going to be met and what the approximate cost of those are. This is also an area that we see is a little more fluid as we're working with those students and their families, what the best place or educational program for that student is. We will see that sometimes fluctuate from year to year, and even with students within the year, as we try to find the exact correct fit. Availability of funds, as always, there's more wants and needs than there will ever be resources. So it's really a matter of prioritizing and determining where best that we can put our resources. All right, so again, I just isolated on the educational fund. You can see by and large, salaries increased by 4.83%. We've talked, you have actually done a fair amount of the hiring for next year, which all of those would have been embedded into this. Some of the supports that we talked about in the areas of, you know, psychologists, some of the guidance, social services, support services, the special ed, those are where some of these larger increases are coming from, which directly align to where we've placed our priorities. Like I said, benefits are up higher, our renewals were not at 8.23%, they were actually really great renewals, but this was based on what the individual selections were through open enrollment. Down in some of the areas, you'll see the percentages, the numbers get smaller, so the percentages start to sway a little bit greater. But overall, up in the educational fund, 4.83%. All right, some of those highlights. And we'll go through this in further detail. We will have a finance and operations committee meeting. Please respond to the doodle that Kathy sent out if you haven't already, so we can narrow down that date. But that meeting will be focused primarily on the budget. Educational highlights, though, and really trying to just put that into one sentence, which is increase in student services and support. I mean, Sheila has outlined the work that was done previously, and I think the work that they hope to continue. The continued development of our theater program. On the facility highlights, and most of these, if not all of them, you've probably already approved. This is the remaining amount in the auditorium rigging, the lighting in AV, roof life cycle, so as you know, we partition out our roofs and do them in chunks. The west campus, south parking lot, and the tennis courts, which if you drove in, you saw look a mess because they're in progress. And then also looking at a replacement, an update of our east campus elevator. So those are some of the larger ticket items. All right, so what's the bottom line? All funds. Even though I didn't talk about the operations and maintenance debt services, all that information was included in your packet, we'll go through it in further detail at the committee level, and then again, a more detailed presentation in September. Revenues of 48.7, and we're looking at expenditures right now of $50,823. So that is a shortfall of $2 million, 2.1 million in round numbers. I'd be losing at this video game with the dexterity. So looking at the year-over-year, you can see that overall, we have revenue decrease of .8%. Now, part of that is, you'll see an increase, if you look at debt services, if recall, we refinanced that debt, right? So we're bringing in less money, less revenue, but we're also, because our debt service is lower, we're paying out less. So that does impact the numbers on both sides, if you keep that in mind. Overall, expenditures are up 1.95%. So although there was a 4.83 in the ed fund, we had some decreases in some of the other funds as well. I want to talk about the negative 2.1 million, because I don't want anyone to be alarmed. The budget is unbalanced, this was not unexpected. It is due to the implementation of what we're calling our grand plan initiatives, that we will talk further on, and our planned facility improvements. We do a careful monitoring of our budget and our five-year projection. We knew that we wanted to make these initiatives and move forward on them. We're not concerned that the district is going to fall below our fund balance policy, which is 10%. And we'll continue work with the finance committee on a financing plan for the remaining capital items in that five-year plan, as we've outlined in previous finance committee members and previously discussed with the board. We recommend the action tonight, then, to go ahead and approve that resolution. It will place this on display, set September 11 as our date, and we will publish that in a newspaper of general circulation for anyone to read. Happy to take any questions, or also invite anyone that would like to come to the Finance and Ops Committee meeting once we have that date.
Let's take a motion first, and then we could ask, see if there's any questions for Jen. So may I have a motion to adopt the resolution to display the FY '18 tentative budget?
Yeah, I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education adopt the resolution to display FY '18 tentative budget.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for Jen?
Well, thank you for this presentation. It was a lot easier to understand than what was in our packet. Will you be able to share this version with us? Because, you know, I was, a lot of information was there that I was not able to garner in advance, and I'd like to review it further.
Sure.
Questions? Okay.
So the upshot of the budget for the coming year is, so if there's a single talking point, is what this budget does next year that our budget for this year did not do was to significantly increase support for students and direct services to kids in a variety of different ways.
Yes. That is, we tried to come up with what succinctly addresses what we were trying to achieve by many of these changes, and it was an easy decision to say increase in student supports, student services and support. Because, as, you know, as started in the conversation by Sheila and will carry on through this budget, that has been a big focus and a big initiative of our district.
The second thing I wanted to ask you was, when you look at, we're talking about next year's budget, would you briefly summarize how we ended our '16-'17, if you would?
Yeah, we're not quite final-final, there's still some entries to be posted, we're only sitting at July 10. But as I mentioned to the board previously, we had a very successful year financially. We'll be even helped more so by the fact that we received some state funds before June 30 that I didn't, didn't actually think would show up before the first of the year. But, we did have a projected deficit, deficit for '16-'17 due to some construction that we did. We actually eliminated that deficit, and I think we'll post a positive for '16-'17.
Could I just ask, and maybe you said this, but of that 4.8% increase in the education fund, can you remind us how many new FTEs that corresponds to?
I would ask for help on that with HR, who keeps track of that, and then I budget it from that.
12.6? Okay, 12.6, yeah. I just want people to appreciate that it's not just a 4.8% raise for everybody already here.
12.6 more bodies.
More people serving our students. Okay.
Questions? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. Next is approval of tuition-based student, tuition-based students attendance and transition program. Anyone want to talk about this before we?
I will, briefly.
Okay.
So we have a transition program, we frequently call it our adult program, it's in this, in this facility. We have a number of adult students through age 22 that are there, and when we have capacity for a neighboring district, in this case Highland Park, to bring a student over to us, providing we don't have to add staff or expand our facilities, it's mutually beneficial. So we offer a service that they couldn't provide, and then we receive tuition for that student. So the last couple of years, we've had a transition student tuition program in the basement here.
So we're required to approve any non-Lake Forest students that come into the program?
That's right.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the tuition-based students attendance in transition program?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the tuition-based students attendance in transition program.
Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mrs. Carley?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of an assistive, assistive technology consultant contract. Anybody want to talk about that first? Mike?
So, we anticipate that our need for assistive technology in the form of a consultant is going to exceed our administrative authority at this point, which is a $25,000 threshold. This assistive technology consultant, the need for these folks will go up and down depending on who happens to move in or who happens to be a current student in the district. And so, generally speaking, these folks are itinerants, because unless you're a very large district, you won't have a need for a full-time equivalent in this, and this is the case for us. So this is a service that we have offered in the past and believe that it's going to exceed our, the limit that we can authorize within the district.
Can you explain a little bit about what assistive technology is?
Right, so if we have a student, easiest thing to think of is a student that is visually impaired. The student needs some sort of technology to assist in reading or producing in a variety of different ways. So sometimes we have students whose eyes track differently across a page, and then various technologies are incredibly helpful for those students to receive, and then sometimes to reproduce the information. They can be readers, they can be, I think called dragon speak, that reads the book to you, there are a whole variety of different things, and these are tailored to individual students. So, there is no two applications that are alike.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the assistive technology consultant contract?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the assistive technology consultant 2017-2018 contract.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, questions, discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Carley?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of a private placement coordinator consultant contract. Mike, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So this is a similar situation to the assistive technology. We have a small number of students. I usually... We have a small number of students, usually with very, very complex needs that need to be privately placed. These are extremely detailed meetings and conversations and frequently take a lot of bandwidth. And we anticipate that we will have, again, a need for the coming year, and you don't know whether you're going to continue to need this in the future or if this is a one-time thing based on who is in. So this is a student, so if private placement, think of a student that has some sort of specific social or emotional need that needs to be placed in a therapeutic setting of some kind, and finding the right setting that works for the student, works for the family, also works for the school district, there's a process that you have to go through. These are generally students that have worked their way through other situations, and we are not able to fully meet their need. They might be there for a month, or two months, or six months, or they might be there for the entire four years. It's completely situational. And again, they're extremely time, labor-intensive, and with all the other things that we have going on, this is what we believe is a smart use of our resource.
Also, is this funded by an IDEA grant?
Actually, part of both proposals or both things that we're bringing to you, partially funded by IDEA.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the private placement coordinator consultant contract? Somebody?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the private placement coordinator consultant 2017-2018 contract.
Second?
Second.
Two seconds. Any discussion, comments, questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is approval of an addendum to our existing principal's contract. We've all seen the changes. Is there anything, Mike, you want to say about it?
It aligns, one is a clerical change, aligning a date, another is aligning language with other contracts that we have, making it consistent. And the third one is clarification that the attorney suggested to make clear that if a practice that's been in place, that it's clearly articulated.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the addendum modifying our principal's contract?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the addendum modifying principal's contract.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of our Title I district plan. Mike, you want to explain what that is, why we're approving this?
I'm totally going to pass this one and this one off to Dr. Holland.
So our district, just like every other district, Title I serves schools and families who qualify for services based on income. And every year, our district qualifies based on the number of students who fall within a specific economic bracket. We receive funds to support them. And Title I is known, although the funds are targeted based on percentages of students who are families who qualify for low-income services, Title I funds end up spanning across the district and actually ends up supporting more students than are identified. And so there have been some changes at the state level to Title I. We submit a huge grant proposal every year. This is the first year where, well, the grant requirements have changed significantly. They're pretty extensive. We engage different stakeholder groups, which we've had those meetings, and they were very helpful at meetings, actually, to let us know how we can better serve our families and support them. And the final phase of what's required is that we now bring the grant, the proposal or the plan to the board for approval. And we still have to submit the plan after you approve it, but it's just making sure that before we send something to the state, the board has had a chance to read through it. If the state recommends revisions, as long as the board knows the original process, I'll end up communicating back with all of you if they come back and say, make X, Y, and Z modifications. But this is just so you are aware of the plan that we're submitting.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Title I district plan?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the Title I district plan.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, thoughts, questions?
Shayla, that was an incredibly complex grant you wrote. Very, very, very detailed in a tremendous amount of work, so thank you.
It's federal.
Funds help us a lot.
Yep, I bet. We got a second, so roll call?
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next we have three policies that have already been through our policy committee, and we've already approved the first reading. So first is approval of Press Issue 94, second reading. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 94?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the second reading of Press Issue 94.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, thoughts, questions? If you have nothing to say about it? Okay, roll call, please?
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of our policy on sick days, vacation, holidays, and leaves, second reading. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the second reading of Policy 5:330, Sick Days, Vacation, Holidays, and Leaves.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott? Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is our human resources report. May I have a motion to approve the human resources report, which includes our exceptional deans and instructional directors' one-year contracts? Any, well, well, first, need a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the human resources report, which includes outstanding deans and outstanding instructional directors' one-year contracts.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, discussion? Allison, anything we should know that isn't evident from the report? Okay. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda items, and I'll remind everybody that any item can be removed at the request.
Mr. President, I think you skipped one of the items.
The third press.
Really? Okay. Good catch. Just making sure you guys are still awake. All right, sorry. Approval of policy 2:120 on board member development, second reading. May I have a motion?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the second reading of Policy 2:120, Board Member Development.
Second?
Second.
Any comments, question, discussions? Roll call vote, please?
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Dr. Elliott?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Carling?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for May 2017, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop dated June 12th, 2017, minutes of an executive session dated June 12th, 2017, disposal of audio recordings from July 14th, 2015. A motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education approve the consent agenda items as presented by Reese Markin.
Sally, you were going to second.
Second.
I saw you. May I have a roll, any comments? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?